Call to order for the Town of St. John Town Council Meeting for April 23rd, 2025. Do we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just stand, please, for a moment of silence. And to those of the Catholic faith, maybe keep in mind the Pope and what they're endeavoring to do right now. You may be seated. Call to order, Beth.
Mike Bovat.
Here.
Christian Jorgensen.
I'm present.
Ann Oster is absent. Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Gerald Swet.
Present.
Bill Manassopoulos.
Here.
Joe Svetnov.
Here.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Thank you, Beth. We have public comment at this time. Item four on the agenda. Timothy Neary.
Yep.
Okay. If you could please come up, sir, and then give your full name and your address, please.
Name's Timothy Neary. Live at 11025 West 108th Avenue in St. John. I'm here for the concerns within neighborhood. I got elected to be the spokesman. But we're all fighting this farm stand that's going in. He's paving his driveway now. Okay? We came here when they wanted to rezone that a business, and the rezoning committee shot that down because we didn't want the extra traffic. You know, it's just, it's a hassle. We have kids, little kids in the neighborhood. They can't ride their bikes because the people are driving around about get hit. Can't, we can't walk. I can't walk my dogs because of the traffic. He's going and doing it, and I talked to Bill today. He didn't have a permit to put the asphalt in. And again, if they said no businesses on that property can't be commercial use, why is he going and doing it? You know, it's just, it's, it's, it's going to be a hassle. And we've had in the past, I had the lot across the street that's vacant. I've come home, there's people sitting in that vacant lot, eating, throwing their garbage out on the street, or on the yard. I have to clean it up. Couple other people had, just had their driveways paved. Instead of pulling in, they went into that, their driveways, turned their wheels, and tore up their driveways. They had to have it repaved. It just, it's getting ridiculous about this. When he has his boxes, he's telling everybody too that he's growing it. And he's not. He's buying it from Butthuma Farms. He gets everything in boxes. He gets the pallets. What's he do with those when they're empty? He was told that by you guys, this is what he's saying, he has the okay to burn all that stuff in, on his property. That was another thing. Last year, he said you guys begged him to put that farm stand in. And I've asked people, nobody has come up and volunteered saying, yeah, we did. You know, so we, what my understanding is, why, why are we putting up with stuff like this? And I know what it's going to do. He's going to pave it, and it's going to say, well, since it's paved, we're going to go ahead and let you put the farm stand in. And you can't let any of these other stores stay open past 10 o'clock. Why does he get to keep his farm stand going until all hours, I mean, he, round the clock? So we have people coming in at 3:00, 4:00 o'clock, midnight, buying stuff and coming through this subdivision. And, you know, it's, it's kind of a hassle. But the biggest thing is, we've asked not to have that there. It's a nice little subdivision. There's, well, 21 residents, 19 of them signed a petition saying they didn't want it. And he's going to go ahead with it, which doesn't make sense. And I think if, if he would just abide by the rules, maybe we would have said, no, go ahead and do it. But he's not abiding by the rules. You know, I, he, some, I think Bill said he came in here and asked to have that farm stand put in. And people are coming in and ripping them off. What's going to happen to the people that are in the subdivision? Are they going to come in and start taking the, start ripping us off? You know, it's, it's, he doesn't have any security. There's no control. So I've, I walk. I do 16 laps around our subdivision every night and, or every day. I've seen people pull in there, load their vehicles up, and take off. Don't pay. What's going to start going and looking at the houses? Let's say somebody has some furniture sitting out on their deck that somebody wants.
And then, Tim, just so you're aware, typically, public comments, three minutes.
Okay, I just, yeah, I get wound up.
No.
I apologize, but it's just, that, that's where I'm at right now. That's what I'd like to have you guys look at.
So I can comment on some of it. As far as the, the asphalt and the paving, Tim made me aware of that. I did check with building and planning, and they'll be out there in the morning to start the proper paperwork with him. As far as the use for a farm stand there along 231, the 231 corridor, it isn't allowed use, and I'll, and I'll make that available to you guys from Ashley's email. But again, as, he is correct that no permits were pulled, and we are dealing with it in building and planning.
Thank you for that, Billy.
He's helped me out a lot.
Okay.
I gotta say that.
All right. Thank you, Tim.
All right, yeah, thanks.
I like his cord.
Yeah. Terry Nellman.
It wouldn't be public comment without Terry.
Pardon?
It wouldn't be public comment without you.
Thank you. Nothing like being persistent. But my name is Terry Nellman. I'm a roughly 25-year homeowner in the Town of St. John at address 9500 West 103rd Place. That's our current residence. I'm here again, now, I'm up here at the podium now, just asking the town council if any of you have any questions for me in some kind of capacity at all at this time. Could we have a, a yes, a no?
Do you have any comments or questions for Terry?
Well, if the attorney doesn't, I certainly don't.
I just figured I'd ask if you have any questions for me at all, since all the time I've been here, so persistent. Is there any?
I don't have any.
With that said, since you're the president, Mr. Bovat, with that said, I'm not getting into, from a hearer, I'm not getting into a conversation of, it's just a statement that I'm going to be making just to exercise my right to free speech. You don't have to respond. I am here today to exercise my right to free speech, to demand the termination of the building commissioner for the Town of St. John, John C. Gill, and his boards that he is on. He has jeopardized the safety of the homeowners.
Mr.?
I'm not in a conversation, I'm making a statement.
We're getting into a personnel issue.
I'm making a statement. It's a, it's, well, but it's a, it's a statement.
So it violates our civility ordinance.
Okay. I, I understand that, but I'm making a statement. There is no conversation.
Terry, Terry, we don't like to talk about employees of the town publicly.
We got a very serious problem with the homes.
You can express the building and planning.
Here we go. I changed, I changed it, I changed it.
Refrain from using people's names.
No problem.
And Terry.
Yes, sir.
Valid complaint.
Pardon?
Valid complaint.
I am, verbally.
No, no, do so formally. If you feel so strongly, then I suggest you do so formally.
Thank you. But I would like to be verbal. Verbal means a lot more than a document missing or misplaced or neglected or not attended to.
I disagree, only because we won't take any action here from your public comment as to your complaint. However, if you have a valid complaint, and one that's judiciable.
It is a valid complaint, sir. And you're an attorney.
And it's judiciable, I am.
And I've invited you to, I've invited you to our home. Our home that he has approved.
I, I, I appreciate that.
Okay? This is very dangerous.
What I'm trying to tell you.
Yes, sir.
Is that there's a judicial route for what it is that you're seeking. This is not the route, and I'm making a suggestion to you.
Okay.
Out of courtesy.
Yes, sir, thank you.
To follow that.
Okay.
Rather than perhaps waste everyone's time here.
You're not a waste of time, sir. These are homeowners after homeowners after homeowners. One of these homes have been sold three times, three times, one of these homes in five years. These are dangerous, structurally deficient and dangerous homes, and it is being allowed to continue in the Astoria subdivision with the backyards of a major gas line.
And Terry, Terry.
Thank you, I, I know my three minutes are up.
You've had three minutes, you can, I'll give you another minute.
No, no, I've said my piece. I understand Mr. Jorgensen's position, but you have to understand, I will be back here to exercise my right to free speech. Okay? No matter what is said, all I can say is I just want to express my right to free speech on what is happening to the homeowners in the gates of St. John, predominantly Cypress Gates. Thank you for hearing me out. If I got a little upset, you have to understand, I mean, Mr. Jorgensen brought it to the point a few, few meetings ago, that this has been five years that Lennar has got away with doing nothing with these homes. Nothing.
Did you not bring back some, some paperwork from Mr. Jorgensen? He looked at, you gave it to the whole council, and it said you went to court and you lost your case, and he read that per the Judge Honorable so-and-so, that you lost your case, whatever that was, whatever you showed us, you lost your case.
Okay, what was the case? Now that you brought it up.
You presented it to us.
Yes, I did.
And Mr. Jorgensen told you.
But, Mr.
By blocking at the paperwork, you lost.
But how many documents have I provided you? How many times has the town brought me into court? Yeah, exactly. The problem is, is you're doing nothing about these homes with these Lennar homes. Sure, the new section at Astoria is their VIP section, their very improved product. But you got the Cypress Gates and these other homes that are structurally deficient and dangerous. Mr. Bovat, thank you very much. Gentlemen, everybody, if I got a little uptight, upright, it's understandable. I've been coming here for over five years, as Mr. Jorgensen, you have stated, which again, I shook your hand, and thank you very, very much for bringing that to the town's attention. Again, thank you. I will be back next meeting, and I respect your point on, on the building commissioner for me.
Mr. President, just one quick kind of anecdote here. When people talk about free speech within the town, we have a regula, we have a right to regulate time, place, and manner of that speech, and we can regulate it by a civility ordinance. We've passed a civility ordinance within the town that discusses people bringing up certain issues that may be offensive to people, such as defamatory comments, personnel issues, and so on. So we have a right through the town to exercise that. So I just wanted to make that clear, that there is a right to free speech, but we have a right to regulate.
Right, we're, we're going to have civility in this council. I can assure you that.
And we've certainly, and the president here has certainly offered wide latitude to everybody.
Yes, he has, very much so, very much so. And?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next, next we have Matt Rohr.
And again, state your full name, please, and your address.
I'm Matt Rohr. I'm at 11069 Hickory Grove Road in the Mill Creek subdivision. I'm, I'm here in support of the council and the town with the Jewel property. This is, as you said, Mike, it's a win-win for the community, and the TIFs are getting a lot of conversation out there in the world, and I thought it was excellent that you put on tape today how that works, how it protects the town. And I come from Naperville, I was there 20 years, big developing community, went through a lot of these same issues, and I just want to provide a perspective. One of the challenges, I'm telling you this, which you know, is, is we're building new properties, and we're dealing with obsolete properties. You have both issues to deal with. And TIFs are created, and they're used all over the country, to give you the tools to try and manage this wisely. And I think this is a great example of the wise use of that tool. And I appreciate the approach you took. This was publicly open, tons of information available like this, and it was a partnership mentality between developer, an outstanding retailer in Jewel, and the town. And I want to commend you for that effort and to keep doing that, and the, the town supports you in that. And the last thing someone told me to tell you is, stop referring it to as the Kresge property, we should call it the Jewel property. That's what we call it in the community now. So thank you very much, but keep up that approach, and we're with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Went through the list. Any other public comment? Somebody that maybe didn't sign up. If not, Billy, I'm going to hold off on maybe having comments from Baker Tilly or anything because I think we have the same group here. Unless you feel like, is there a need to go through it the second time, perhaps?
Well, I mean, we're going to have to go through the ordinance 1866.
Right, okay.
And then we're going to have our public hearing on that.
All right, Billy, go ahead then.
So ordinance 1866, vote. Let's go ahead and, do you want to approve the minutes first, and then we'll just move on?
All right. Approval of minutes for April 9th, 2025, town council meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries four to zero.
William.
Yeah. So I know it was covered previously in the, in the, in the last meeting, but since we are scheduled for 6 o'clock, maybe someone didn't get on the stream and they're watching now.
Good point.
So if we can, we'll bring up Tom Everett from Barnstormburg to give us a recap like he did, and then also Amy Mauser. This is for, for anyone who missed the presentation. This is not for ordinance 1866, for the bulk water and all that, that's not for that. That is just.
The Alchemist presentation again.
So this is just attaching on the public comment, then?
Correct.
Yes.
This has nothing to do with the public hearing.
Okay, this, this is more a public presentation.
Yes.
Correct.
Do I have to repeat what I said before?
Not verbatim.
Perhaps, perhaps.
I mean.
You can do it.
Madam Court Reporter, do you mind just repeating what it is that was said? Sorry. We can do that in court.
Sure. Good evening again, everyone. The ordinance on the agenda this evening authorizes the town to issue economic development revenue bonds of the town to fund a portion of the Jewel OSCO project. Those would be payable from a pledge by the Redevelopment Commission of 90% of the tax increment revenues that are just generated by the project site itself. The bonds would be issued in one or more series and either purchased by the developer itself or by a third-party purchaser, and again, would be payable solely from the incremental tax revenues from the project. The base assessed value, the taxes paid on, currently paid, that have been paid, those would still go through to the overlapping taxing units, the schools, the county, the town, and only the incremental increase in the value of the property from the investment in the property would be captured as tax increment and used to pay the debt service on the bonds. The Redevelopment Commission previously created a new TIF allocation area for the project after holding a public hearing in February. I would note that no other funds or taxing authority of the town are pledged to these bonds, just the incremental tax revenues from the increase in the property value for the property. If there was ever a shortfall in the, in the tax increment revenues, there would be no responsibility of the town to make up that shortfall. It would be the developer's responsibility to make up any shortfall. Happy to answer any questions.
How about we just say this whole thing is just fantastic?
So this is regards, this is in regards to ordinance 1864?
Yep.
Okay.
1864.
Okay. Wonderful.
As mentioned during the Redevelopment Commission meeting, this is a very traditional use of TIF. This is, this type of project, incentivizing this type of project is the reason that Indiana legislature allows for the use of TIF funds to incentivize these kinds of projects.
And I know that there, again, and rightfully so, Billy, you said we should go through it for the town council meeting, but there's some, maybe some misinformation or some questions that people may not completely understand that in the event when we issue these types of bonds, that there's liability for the town, for the taxpayers. Could you comment to that, Tom?
Yes, there, there are no other liability, no liability of the town to pay these bonds. Again, they're just payable from the property taxes on the incremental increase in the property that is generated by the project itself. The developer will invest in the property, that will increase the assessed value of the property, and that increase in the assessed value, those property taxes are the only thing that will go toward these, towards these bonds. And there would be no other funds or taxing authority of, of the town that would pay these bonds. If there was ever a shortfall, like I mentioned, it would be the developer's responsibility to pay any shortfall, not the town's.
Thank you for that. And then Wayne, as you were saying, there's a huge investment here from Dell. Dell had to step out, but.
Right. And they're, the, he's going to put in 26 million, and Jewel's going to put in another five to seven million, so it's, it's worth around $31 million. To take a blighted area and, and put that improvement there, it's a win-win for the town. It's a win-win for everybody.
Agreed.
And the road, and the access.
Yeah. They're going to put a $600,000 road to get out to 96. That's, that's another win. And they're doing that just to get this project off the ground. And it took a lot of hard work between all of us on this board to get it done, and Billy and, and Beth, everybody putting their heads together. It, it's a no-brainer.
And again, I know that there was some concern by somebody, and they did raise the concern about the $3.5 million in the bonds, and if that person is in the room, if they had any other comments or question, whoever was able to bring that forth?
Oh, that was actually me. That was somebody that came forward and asked me about someone's question, so I thought that would be a good question for us to address and answer, that the $3.5 million is not coming out of the town's pocket. As a matter of fact, it's the developer, the buyer of the bonds, who is going to pay that, and they're the ones that are responsible to pay it back.
Yeah, I think, I don't think.
I think, Jerry, I think.
The president was referring to your question, Jerry. I, I know there was a flyer and some other solicitation going out publicly, and I think he was just addressing that portion.
Yes.
I wouldn't even give that, I wouldn't even give that, that, that fire from whatever cowardly anonymous group that came from, who can't put down their information as to who it is that's publicizing it, which is a violation anyway. It's, it, it doesn't deserve our, our discussion, and it certainly doesn't deserve any consideration by this council. It's, has to have been put out by, by anonymous people because it's utterly ignorant, and there's, the town wants the redevelopment of this property, and it's, again, it deserves no comment from this council or any discussion, unless anybody's willing to step up and take credit for that disinformation that's being disseminated. So unless they are, then I say we close that subject for good.
All right. Very good. I just wanted to see if there was anyone here. Thank you, Christian. Tom, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, Andy?
Good evening again. Andy Mauser with Baker Tilly. For those that may not have been able to tune in for the Redevelopment Commission, again, I think this is a project that meets one of the most traditional tests for a TIF area, which again, is, is what's known as the but-for test, that the new development would not have occurred but for the TIF incentive with a building that's set vacant for well over a decade. I think it certainly holds true again to that, that traditional test. Again, just to put some numbers to it, this is a site that currently is a vacant building, and the land under that build, building has a, an assessed value of about $1.7 million. The majority of that is the land, about 1.2 of that $1.7 million is the land value, and then that vacant building is worth right around a half a million dollars as well. That 1.7 million total does generate about $28,000 a year in annual taxes, and of that $28,000, about $6,000 does come back to the town with the county and the school corporation being the other largest recipients of a portion of that $28,000. The goal here, as, as has been mentioned, this is a $25, $30 million investment into the property. The hope is that that will convert to somewhere in the range of $10 to $15 million in assessed value, and that $10 to $15 million in assessed value would then generate about $200,000 to $300,000 a year in taxes. So taking that 1.7 million, again, turning that into $10 to $15 million from an assessed value perspective, and then taking that $28,000 and turning that into hopefully somewhere in the range of $200,000 to $300,000 a year in taxes. Again, important to note that that 1.7 million of base with the $28,000 currently being paid, that will remain in the tax base and continue to be paid to the overlapping taxing units, and it's only any, any increase in property taxes that will be captured by the TIF. And then to Tom's point, the town will just be pledging a portion of the TIF. No other revenues will back the bonds that will be issued, to the extent bonds are purchased by a bank or other third-party. If there is a shortfall in TIF revenues, the developer would be responsible for making shortfall payments to that third-party purchaser. And if the developer does purchase their own bonds, they would have the ability to just waive any shortfalls in the TIF as they would be the bondholder and ultimate recipient of the TIF dollars. So again, happy to answer any questions. And then, you know, the goal of a project like this is to utilize the TIF to encourage the investment, and then once the TIF area and the bonds are repaid, get that investment back to the tax base at the, the end of the TIF area. So again, happy to answer any questions.
So you would say, and you put it pretty succinctly, Andy, but like, this is a wise move, wouldn't you agree, or?
Correct.
Yeah. This is something that just benefits the town, and it's an extreme positive, so. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Moving on in the agenda, item six, public hearing, A, ordinance 1866, and ordinance amending town ordinance number 1772, being an ordinance of the town council of the Town of St. John, amending rates and charges for the use of and services rendered by the waterwork system of the Town of St. John in all matters related thereto. Attorney setting off?
Yes, we were, we were asked to go ahead and amend this ordinance from the clerk treasurer and from the town manager regarding certain recommendations on changing some of the usages in water, water charges that were going on. So at this time, I'd probably turn it over to clerk treasurer, so you better well dive into the details of this.
Okay, thank you.
There are two changes being made to the ordinance. One is the rate that we are going to charge for new residents, their water meter fee. It's going to increase from $500 to $700 to cover the town's costs. There just was, has, there's been an increase in the cost of water meters. Public Works went through the three or four different vendors that we purchased water meters from and just took the going average, and that's where we came up with $700. The second change is at the, or for the bulk water rate that we charge for contractors to fill up their trucks and things over at Public Works. It's going to increase to $10 per, I think it's per 1,000 gallons of water, which again, is in line with the City of Crown Point and the Town of Sherrville as well.
Okay, so you benchmarked that?
Yes. And there, just to make sure it's on the record, there is no change to the actual water rates that we are charging for the customers or residents of town. That remains the same.
So you're saying, Beth, that customers that are established, that have been paying their water bills, there's no rate increase?
Even new residents coming in to pay their water bills, new customers will still pay the same water rates. It's just the fee that we charge to install their water meter. Our costs increased, so we're passing those costs along to the person buying the house.
Meter, meter costs have gone up. Brass is sky-high, so a dual check valve years ago was $94, now it's like $175, and that's. ago was 94 dollars. Now it's like 175 dollars. And that's required for every house, so that's the reason why that's changing.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Basically, each new meter that we're installing for all of the new development, the town is losing 200 dollars per install. So we're just bringing it back up so that we're at a net zero.
Very good. Thank you. Joe, proofs of publication?
Proof of publication are in order, Mr. President, at this time, and the public hearing should proceed as follows.
Thank you. Billy?
Beth covered the opening remarks, so...
I would like to open to the floor for any public comments. Anybody from the floor that would like to speak? No one from the floor is coming forward, so we're gonna close the public hearing. Motion to consider ordinance 1866 on first reading. Do I have a motion?
Yes, President, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 1866 on first reading.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Moving to number seven, agenda items, A, financial matters of the corporation, requests to purchase. There are a total of five requests to purchase in the combined total of 205,451 dollars and 97 cents. Beth, could you comment on these?
These are for the popcorn machines and our other vending machines and things like that. We're putting in town hall, right?
Yep. So you have one to Coroterra, and this is our locate management services for Public Works. You have one for best equipment, and this is for a sewer inspection camera and trailer for Public Works. And then you have Brindley Mountain Fire Apparatus. This is for the fire department. It's a listing fee for the sale of our ambulance, 4,500. Pulse Technology, I need, this is for my office, we need a new fire safe cabinet for all of our ordinances and resolutions. And then lastly, you guys had approved the contract with Andrews Technology at your last meeting. It was in the contract, kind of as an addendum, but I felt like, let's go ahead and just do a, a request to purchase as well, so you know exactly with our startup costs and our first year for the payroll services, we would be at 21,000. I just want to make sure it was very clear for the council what we, what you guys signed into for the contract.
Thank you for that, Beth.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question on the best equipment for 169,000 dollars. I guess my question is, did we get multiple bids for that, or is that through a state contract?
It's through Sourcewell. So it's through a state contract.
Thank you.
And, and the reason why we're doing that, Jerry, is we were sharing the camera trailer with the Town of Sherraville, and that, that kinda went kaput. They're, they're getting a new cameras truck too, so...
Okay.
That, we need it, and it's gonna be ours. We're not gonna share it with anybody.
All right. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion for the request to purchase in the amount of 205,451 dollars and 97 cents?
Motion to approve purchase.
I'll support. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Item two, accounts payable voucher dated April 23rd, 2025, representing payment for payroll, supplies, services, and equipment rendered to the Town of St. John in the combined total of 1,272,656 dollars and 83 cents. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve accounts payable voucher.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Item eight, ordinances and resolutions, A, consider ordinance 1864, an ordinance of the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the town to issue one or more series of its economic development revenue bonds relating to a commercial development project to be located in the St. John Economic Development Area 1, and approving and authorizing other action in respect thereto on second reading. So this is our second reading, and this does do with Billy, Area 1. That's the jewel?
Correct, yes, for the Alchemist Project.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. President, I have a motion to adopt on second reading ordinance 1864.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Oh, Jerry's first, so...
I thought your, that phone was the second.
It tried to be. So I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Item B, consider ordinance 1865, an ordinance establishing Town Code Charter, Chapter 10, Article 7, Section 10-98, entitled Community Center Fee Schedule, and repealing all Town Code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith on second reading. Billy, you wanna comment to that?
Correct. So with the, the anticipation of our community center coming online, we've established these rates for renting, and it's for your consideration here tonight.
On second reading. I know we went over it before.
Yeah, we went through it before, yep.
Do I have a motion for ordinance 1865?
Motion to adopt ordinance 1865 on second reading.
Support. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero.
If you don't mind, Mr. President, I do want to say that we put out a save the date module for the community center, and the good news is, with the proposed rates, well, the ones that you guys just adapted tonight, we've had 25 different people already booked the facility.
Already?
Well, yes, save the date for the facility.
And, and Mr. President, there was an extreme amount of work that came from the clerk treasurer and from the town manager to make sure our rates remain competitive throughout the, throughout the area. So I applaud, I applaud them.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Beth. Billy?
Just a quick question. Are we, hopefully we're recommending local vendors for use at the community center for catering and things like that?
The Park Board is going to consider a independent contractor agreement for somebody to kind of manage the bookings, I'm gonna say. And one of the things she'll be tasked with is putting together a local vendor package, I guess, kind of talking to the different vendors here, so that it can at least be presented to the people who are gonna rent the facility. And, you know, if you wanna do grilling, you know, check out Welsh's Stop and Shop. If you're looking for a breakfast buffet, we've got Avgo right around the corner. So just kind of putting together those things.
Facility, a facilities director.
Kind of, yeah, as well as planning various different events that will be hosted on behalf of the town in the facility. So it's kind of a twofold agreement, but yeah, I think it's gonna work out nicely.
That's great.
Yep.
That's great. Always honor for old people for the town.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, consider resolution 2025-04-23A, a resolution of the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies within the 2025 budget. Either Beth or Billy?
Sure, this is ARPA funds. Again, you're gonna probably see this various additional times throughout the year. Their first group engineering came in a little bit less on one of their contracts. I think it's around 500 dollars. So we're just going to take those funds and transfer them to an existing project within ARPA.
Thank you for that. Do I have a motion to resolution 2025-04-23A?
Motion to adopt resolution 2025-04-23A.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Item D, consider resolution 2025-04-23B, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, approving the holding of public hearings by the St. John Redevelopment Commission relating to the Heartland Park Southern Expansion Project in all matters related thereto. Billy, can you?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Again, asking for permission to, to hold a public hearing.
Okay. So that's for the Heartland Park expansion. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion to adopt resolution 2025-04-23B.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Moving to item nine, Town Council Action, A, consider Pitney Bowes Agreement not to exceed 9,043 dollars and 80 cents.
Mr. President, if I may, the 9,043 dollars and 80 cents, that's over a five-year term. Annually, we will be paying 1,808 dollars and 76 cents. Our machine needs to be replaced, and so it's, it's time for us to upgrade the machine and service. And so it's an 864-dollar increase in total over the next five years. But just so you know, it's not 9,043 dollars annually. That's over a five-year period. It's 1,800 annually, which is split amongst the various different departments who use the postage. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that clarity. Do I have a motion to consider Pitney Bowes Agreement not to exceed the amount stated?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero.
Just very quickly, I'm sorry. Joe, do I need a motion to allow the President to sign that agreement on behalf of the town, so we can be done with this?
Well, you can certainly make a motion for the Town Council President to sign off on it, or give the permission to the town manager. I mean, whichever way you wanna, whichever way you wanna go on this. Usually, the Town Council President has authority to sign off on any type of contract, but if you wanna give them specific direction tonight to do it, please go ahead and do so.
So, right, do either sign in English or Greek?
They can sign in Macedonian.
All right. Well, all right. I'll wait till the second one, and then I'll make a motion for Paul.
Okay. Item B, consider a donation in the amount of 20,000 dollars to the St. John Volunteer Fire Department. Billy, can you comment to this?
Yeah, so this is as in, well, not as in previous years. Previously, the amount was 15,000. That was approved by the council. This year, the volunteer fire department has asked if it could be up to 20. Inflation and some maintenance costs and insurance that's going up. That's all.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments on that? Do I have a motion then for the 20,000 dollar donation to the St. John Volunteer Fire Department?
So moved.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero.
Mr. President, if I may interject, I'll make a motion to permit the town president to sign the contract between, for Pitney Bowes Agreement and the donation, and any other related documents thereto.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero for the President to sign the documents.
And be on the hook for any outrage or any other problems.
Understood.
Personally liable.
Personally liable, of course. No identification agreement?
Nope.
I'll have to talk to you later, Joe.
Favor general release and identification. That's what we're agreeing to.
Item 10, reports and correspondence. Anything from the Town Council?
I have nothing.
Saturday, we're gonna have shred day, so that's been advertised. That's coming up. So if we got papers to shred, that's from, I think, nine o'clock to 11. But Beth, that's Beth's project, so maybe I'm stepping on her toes.
Clark Middle School this year. So anyone interested in shred day, just make sure you're heading a little bit farther east.
Right.
Down 93rd to Clark.
And then I wanna also mention Suncrest Church. They did a cleanup with, Gabe is our foreman for Public Works, and they picked up papers, they planted trees, they painted the mechanics office in Public Works. They did 21 picnic tables. We provided the lumber, and the church made the, made the tables. I think that's, that was great that we, they've done it before, and hopefully it continues on. But it's a good way for the community and the church to get together and, and share some of these tasks. And then one other thing, Jolly Add Street, they're, they're gonna start the path soon, and we'll have a path from Parish all the way to 96th. And I think, Billy, that they're, they're gonna do something with the street also.
So we're reviewing some options on Jolly Add. But again, the, the initial was our path all the way down to 96th, and we are reviewing some other options with our engineering firm.
To try and do all that at one time without having to come back another year and cause more...
Correct.
Havoc in the, on the street, so...
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And you should mention that the shredding is no question to ask. Nobody's being, going to look at what it is you're shredding. So this is an eye is off.
There are park and watch spots, if you wanna make sure nobody's digging through your boxes.
Yeah. Last year, Christian came with a pickup truck loaded with papers. I'm like, wow.
Right. And everybody turned their head, and it was fine.
It worked. I would just like to comment that, I know we just went through Easter and the Easter celebration, remembering the resurrection, and I just wanna commend the Parks Department, the Public Works. I don't get to participate in all the events, but the Easter egg hunt. I have grandchildren, and it was rousing success. I mean, they loved it, well organized. My granddaughter found a special egg. It was golden, so she wound up getting an Easter basket. So great day, beautiful weather, and it was just really a joint effort. And, and I appreciate what our Parks Department, Public Works, what they're doing for the community. I thought it was outstanding. That's all I have. Anybody else?
No. I, nothing for me, other than what I've already said, and I think it's a very, very good day for the council and the town.
Thank you for that. Moving on to B, Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as everyone's aware, our 231 in Parish project, our commercial district, we have some updates. We'd like to show the council and the public some of the renderings for approval, so they can get moving on, on working and getting these places rented out, and also some use. So right now, I'd like to call up Steve Kill. Check, yeah, there you go. So this is a, just preliminary, it's not a final, but...
So this is the preliminary site plan that's going to, kind of how it's gonna lay out. This is actually for the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission has site plan approval. What I'm going to show you next, after this, is going to be the elevations and the uses and things, but I guess it's kind of easier if I point to it.
So this is Parish over here. We have a building going here. This building and that building are going to be built in unison, so in conjunction with each other. This one will be the ladder building. So just so you can see, we have all the parking. We have a sidewalk here. This is dedicated to outdoor seating, obviously parking in the, on both sides of the building. And when we get to the elevation, you'll see how that works too. But this is the general site plan of what we're going to be doing. So just so everybody knows, Parish, we're on our way to the east. That's how it's gonna go. The state has acquired the right-of-way, the non-Parish, or the roundabout. So that will be proceeding, I believe, in about a year or so, but they have reached the right-of-way. So the project is ready, from their perspective, to spend it, and they can go. But this is, this nears what we presented to the Plan Commission and the Town Council earlier. We are now at a point where we're going to seek approval of the commercial buildings and the uses. So hopefully everybody understands the site plan, and if we could get to the, the buildings we wanna build.
This first picture right here represents what will face south towards Mill Creek on what we wanna call our downtown, like the Main Street. So what you see there is, there will be a sidewalk that goes in front, closest to the parking, and then in front of each of the businesses, everybody's required to have outdoor seating for restaurants and everything. So that's what that space is reserved for. Now, each individual user, I'm sure they're gonna want their own little planters out there and little, you know, little fence or something. I don't know, we don't know exactly what they're gonna want, but they have to follow, obviously, this guideline here. but they have to follow, obviously, this guideline here, and this type of, type of building. So what we're asking for tonight, and if, I don't know if you want to flip through the pictures, Jackie, at all, and show everybody, this is just another angle of how it's gonna look. This actually is going to be the back of the buildings, which is gonna face two thirty-one. So, what we did was, we raised in the middle there, where, I don't know if you see where tenant B, when you have restaurant uses that we're gonna ask for and things of that nature, there's a lot of mechanicals. So, there has to be a place to hide that. Those parapet walls will be raised to hide the mechanicals behind that. There's also, these are true two-story buildings, these, this is what you're seeing right now, where there will be office uses above, the actual restaurant and commercial uses below. So this is exactly what we, that indicated we wanted to build when we came in and asked permission, and asked, obviously, for the zoning. So, I am here tonight to ask, well, let me, let me recap. One of the things that, two of the things that we agreed to was that the town council would retain architectural and use control of the commercial. So, that's why I've been working with Billy, and we've been trying to dial in the architecture to make sure it's what everybody wanted. And I think we've, I think we've arrived there. So these are very nice, very expensive buildings. Um, again, we plan on building the one, the one closest to Parish, and then the two that I showed you, then the third one will follow. Then, closest to Park Place, there's a whole nother building. So, actually, we got a lot of them going up, which, which is gonna be nice. And the uses that I'm requesting, I'm requesting office uses on the second floor, and I'm requesting restaurant uses on the first floor. Um, we're gonna go from lunch, dinner, breakfast, lunch, um, sandwich, little sandwich pizza shop, coffee shop. We're all, we're concentrating right now all on restaurants, because I know that's exactly what the town council wanted. Mr. Lot knows that. That's the concentration right now. And we would like to get these, we actually have our users, they want to start the design of their, of the interior, of the, the build-out for everything, and they're not allowed to start until I get approval from the town council, so that's kind of why, they want, they actually want to get going. And they're excited about being in St. John, they're excited about opening up, they love the idea of we're gonna build a little downtown area. When I say little, it's a half a mile long. This is not a little downtown area. This isn't a little commercial area. Now, obviously, there's gonna be infill. You can only have so many restaurants. So, I know at some point, I'm gonna be coming back, asking for certain retail uses as they, you know, as they come up. So that will be an ongoing process. But right now, the uses that I listed of the restaurants, I'm asking it, though, the town council will just approve those, and I'm asking that you approve these elevations.
So, real quick question. This screen is facing, this part is facing Mill Creek, correct?
Yeah, it's facing south.
Yes.
Facing south. And then the other side, if Jackie flips back, is facing two thirty-one.
Yeah, that's facing two thirty-one.
So this faces two thirty-one.
Yeah, you can take a peek, and that's kind of how, it's a little easier, see if it's in front of you.
But in you-
But that is the two thirty-one side of the businesses.
We had to, this project's kind of unique, because you have to actually do a double frontage look on these buildings. That's why you see the, the backs-
Your front yards are your side yards, and your side yards are your front yards.
Yeah, I mean, that's why you see that there's so much detail that goes into this, and we went through so much care. You can't put any of the mechanicals, you can't put anything on the outside of the building. They have to be hid behind the parapet wall up top, so it doesn't detract from the look of two thirty-one.
But dumpsters and all that won't be on this back end?
There will, there, no, for the restaurants, if you look on the site plan that we're gonna present, there will be a dumpster enclosure, but it will be built like and kind to these buildings. So you see that, the same brick you see on the buildings, that is gonna blend right in. We're hoping that it's not going to dominate anything. But let's face it, when we were talking to the users and we were talking to the builder, if you don't have the proper things to service a restaurant, they're simply not coming. They, they have to be able to operate. So, we are gonna, we're gonna go through great pains to make sure that these enclosures, you can see pretty obvious kind of where the restaurants are planning to go, um, we're going to make sure that these enclosures are like and kind to the main structure, and that they're hidden absolutely as, as good as you can hide something like that. There's only so much you can do.
Can they go on the side?
No, we don't want them on the side.
So my question is, if all the parking is on two thirty-one, but that's the back of the building, how do people get into these buildings?
It's up to each individual tenant. Some of them may want to enter from the front and the back.
Okay.
Some of them, as you do right now in Crown Point, every time I go to Culinary Misfits, I park behind the building, and I walk between the buildings and walk around front. So, that is kind of what's gonna happen if they park in the back, Jerry. But, think about it, we're gonna have professional, or, I don't wanna say professional, offices, obviously professional, but offices on the second floor, that's probably where the tenants will park for that. I mean, remember, we have almost four hundred parking spots in that downtown area. That road is the equivalent of four lanes of traffic. So each one of those parking stalls is twenty feet deep and ten feet wide. And they're done like, they're, that is done specifically to accommodate the vehicles that are driven in St. John. Everybody's got an SUV, everybody's, so you have to make them ten by twenty. The council just passed the golf cart ordinance. It wouldn't surprise me if we come back at some plan, and there's golf cart parking somewhere. I mean, I, I fully envision all of that taking place. I just know that we have a lot of users that are anxious to get going with their architects, and I, and like I said, that's why I would, I asked to, you know, Bill to bring this up under reports, so I could get in front of the town council, and we can get these people going. We plan on paving all of that area downtown. We've already got the streetlights, I've been working with Ashley, Billy, and planning to get all this done. June, we plan on paving. So, June of this year, I mean, I'm talking in a matter of, you know, give us two months, and I believe we're paving that street. That's our goal now. Every other day, we get rain, but we want to get this, the whole, and when I say the street, I believe, we're gonna, when I come to final plat and do the site plan, we're gonna final plat the entire area. We're not gonna do it piece by piece anymore, is my understanding. So, because we have a lot of commercial users now, different buildings that want to be built, so we need to get that done.
I, I think it looks good myself. The only thing is, could you go back to the picture for the back, the back of the building? Uh, is there a possibility of doing something maybe with windows in there, Steve?
You know, Mikey, I, we can, if, so, depending on where, depending on where, like, a dumpster enclosure would go and take a couple spots up, I don't, we wouldn't want to put any windows behind that, obviously.
Right.
But any place where, you know, something would be visual, you know, or visible from two thirty-one, um, I know that Mr. John is really working on that right now. So, I don't know that they're going to be real windows, they may be faux.
That would be the recesses that we're looking at.
And it depends, because a lot of, the reason I can't, I can't guarantee all of it, is because I don't know what those restaurants are gonna want on that back wall. And when you get to the inside of the building, a lot of, some of that space may be taken up with equipment. We simply, we simply don't know. And I can't allow these people to start design work until I get an approval from you guys. So, as that progresses, I would be more than happy to provide the council with updates on all that. But I can tell you that I will bring that back to the office. And I understand the request, and quite frankly, I think that we all agree on that.
Right.
I, I, there's no argument there at all, just accept where the dumpsters are gonna be, or if you simply can't do it based on the interior layout of a restaurant. I mean, we have one restaurant that wants to take half a building. So we're not talking about, these are not small buildings. In the whole downtown area here, we have about a hundred thousand square foot of re, of space. We don't have a hundred thousand square foot of restaurants, that's why I said, don't be surprised, I'm gonna have to come back and, you know, for retail uses or
Sure.
whatever the case may be. But, I can tell you that I'm only here requesting those restaurant-type uses right now, because I know that was most important to the council. And we knew that's what everybody wanted to see get going. Everybody wanted to see the commercial get going. I know that's a priority. Uh, congratulations on Kmart. You guys did what I could not do. Yeah, you got it done, so that's huge. Um, so I think that everything that I've, you know, discussed with you, and I'm gonna discuss with the plan commission and talk to Matt, is consistent with everything that was said at the meetings. There's nothing that is inconsistent with what was presented.
So, we're looking, and what you're asking is, if we're comfortable with this design to move forward?
I am.
And if for restaurants, and in businesses-
And offices, and, yes, the restaurant office uses
Yeah.
that I've described, I would love for there to be a, just a quick motion to approve these building elevations as presented, and the uses as requested. And then, as more uses come in, I'll be back in front of you.
So, yeah, so what's been approved up to this point? I mean, 'cause you've started some construction, so you obviously have a lot of approvals done.
Right, we have the approvals to develop the property.
Okay.
But I do not have the approval of the architecture of the buildings
Okay.
and the uses, Jerry.
Cause that's by the town council.
That, that was specifically reserved for approval by the town council. So I knew I would have to come back and ask for that.
So I'm-
This juncture, yes.
So I'm wondering, the visibility from two thirty-one, have you gotten, like, variances for, like, landscaping or things like that, or is it something that you can do to make it look a little better?
Yes, the, the plan commission, that actually, I was-
Is that done?
I guess I was more concerned about the buildings and everything, but the plan commission, yes. We indicated that we would be presenting that to the plan commission, like, the site plan that you saw-
But that's not what we're doing tonight.
Landscaping plan, too.
I think, I think what he's saying-
Yeah, all that, all the landscaping, the site plans and all that, that actually, in the documents, we said that we would go to the plan commission, that's typically where you go to get those approved.
Right.
We reserved the uses, so whatever goes there
Mm-hmm.
and we reserved the design of the buildings at the discretion of the town council. So, I'm actually here requesting approval of those buildings, that design. Um, that's, I mean, that's why I gave you pictures. You would actually be approving the pictures. And, uh, and the uses, restaurant uses and office.
And then Steve, if, when, and if they, they approve this here with a motion, and you're able to sign on, then we can, we can make public the, the users that are coming on board, correct?
The second that they are comfortable
Mm-hmm.
you will make them, you can make them public, yes. Nobody even knows if they're getting approved yet. That's why they don't even want, nobody wants their name said, because I told them, I said, hey, guys, you know, until the town council okay's this, we can't allow you to start. So the second that everybody says okay, we, I'd be more, believe me, we, it's not like we want to keep it a secret. These people want to know, want people to know they're coming.
But you are seeing interest, you have interested tenants.
We do, yes. I am asking for, that's why I asked for the breakfast, lunch, the lunch, dinner, the sandwich, pizza, coffee.
Mr. Kill, what exactly is the motion you want to approve today, and is this of record?
It is of, I would, I would like it, well, yeah, because it's a requirement of our zoning. It's a requirement for my, of my getting approval from the town council of the architecture and the uses that'll be there. So, if what I've said, and you're agreeable to the restaurants and the office space, and you're agreeable to this, these buildings, you know, outside seating, we already put, those are all in the documents, then just a quick motion to that effect would be great, and we will be off to the architect. And we're gonna start to, they want to start doing interior designs and-
Well, this is all suspiciously, like, the extremely successful, uh, uh, Centennial Park, um, and also Crown Point. So I see where you got your inspiration, and the crown molding is very nice. Um, it would be, it'd be hard to pass up the St. John's ability to begin to look like a sophisticated town with sophisticated residents, which we have. Um, finally, um, I'm just struggling with the motion, but if I, if I may-
I could-
Because I need to-
Suggest something?
Well, I just need to ensure what it is you exactly need, because if I made a motion to approve the uses, elevation and design as presented, um, in the description of tonight, um, with the uses remaining as the, to the discretion of the town council, is that sufficient?
Yes, I'm only asking for the office uses and the restaurant uses. So if you approve those two, and approve the building elevations, architecture that you see tonight, that's what I am requesting, yes.
And then any other tenant would, he'd have to come back for, like, a retail tenant?
Let's say we have a antique shop.
Retail tenant.
Or a, or a-
Boutique.
I, a boutique. I would come back and say, can I have approval for five retailers from anywhere, from this, 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 and this? Then I would be back in front of you with the retail uses, to get those approved. I mean, I, I think it was understood from the beginning, we can't fill a hundred thousand square foot of restaurants. Nobody can. We are gonna do some infill with shop, you know, little shops and stuff. That's part of a healthy downtown.
They won't come without something more attractive.
Drive, you need to drive a restaurant, you need to drive a retail.
Right.
So for the record, I, I'm not really comfortable with, this is a big deal, and I'm not comfortable voting on something like this without seeing it before the meeting, and also giving the public an opportunity to comment on it. Um, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just not ready to pull the trigger tonight, if that makes sense. If we bring this, get this out, get a real motion, get some, this in public, um, I'd be probably all in favor of this at our next meeting in a couple weeks. That's my feeling.
Everybody just wants to get going, Jerry.
Actually, I actually disagree, and the reason I disagree is because I know, I realize what the urgency is. If, if, if in fact, Mr. Kill is, is, is being honest with us, with the people who are on the hook, they will not commit unless we've at least approved what it is that we're looking at. And without that, we've got a real problem.
Okay, so then, let me take it a step further.
And we'll remember, I believe, we're also retaining the, the right at the town council's discretion for uses.
You are.
Okay.
If we're, if we're retaining the right for, at our discretion for uses, then, I mean, who the hell wouldn't want-
So let me, so let me change my, my, my idea then. Basically, if this doesn't, and if we approve this tonight, and it doesn't get done nicely, I'm gonna scream and holler for the next time you come over here and ask for approvals for the next batch. Cause I want to see it all, I want to see it all up front.
Well, Jerry, that's why I'm giving you colored pictures of it, because here's what we want to build. We're not, it's not a guess. These are, these are the buildings. And I'm only asking for two specific uses. I'm not asking for carte blanche, like Christian said. I'm asking for offices
Right.
which, sure, kind of nobody's, and I'm asking for restaurant uses, as I've outlined. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for another thing tonight.
Right.
The offices are only on the second floor.
The offices will be on the second floor.
Well, you had me at offices, because we don't have any offices here.
We don't have any office space.
Unless you have a developer willing to dump tens of millions of dollars into creating a downtown concept for you on a main thoroughfare.
Yeah.
I understand that, but I also know that there's parking in the back, and the back is what faces our main thoroughfare.
Well, but I think the developer is agreeing to make it as attractive as possible, both on the front end and on the back end
Right.
to make sure it's attractive to everyone.
Well, that's why they're all, if you look at the rear elevation on two thirty-one, you can see what the rear elevation looks like. It's brick, it's all, I mean, it's not, it's like I said, it's not a secret. It, this is what, this is what it looks like, so.
And your outfit would be amenable, like, in those recess spaces there, depending on what the use is going to be, provided they need it. I mean-
And I've already committed.
With faux windows.
And I've committed to my, Mr. Boba, that, hey, prov- And I've committed to Mike, Mr. Boba, that, hey, provided there's not some internal architectural reason, those are going to look like windows.
So, why couldn't it have been flipped around? The building itself?
You don't, well, because I, I thought we were trying to create an outside seating, walkable downtown area. And that's what Mill Creek residents, that's what we presented at all the meetings.
Okay.
The mall between the restaurants and the town hall.
Right.
It's a community feel.
Yeah, it's, it's to create a downtown, is what the whole concept was, if everybody recalls from...
Rather than being on the highway.
That's all we discussed.
But Steve, but Steve, the tenant has the option of locating their entrance anywhere they want to, either on 231 or...
Well, they can do on 231, they can just do on the main street on, main street side, they can, it just depends on what kind of use it is.
McVeigh's you can go on either end and all.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of them.
Now, there's some restaurants don't like to do that, but like Beth said, McVeigh's is a great example. You know, there's parking in the back. The one thing that we, that St. John is going to have here, that every other community that has a area like this, let's say, we have accommodations for parking that nobody has. We, we've got, we, like I said, we are building the equivalent of four lanes of asphalt on this road. Those parking spots are 10 by 20. We got 400 on the front of the buildings, plus every parking lot in the back of the building. There's, there's more parking, and this is exactly, this plan right here mirrors what we've, what we got approved. We knew there was going to be parking in the back. We knew we had a downtown feel, we have a sidewalk. You're walking on both sides. We have nice, and again, Billy and Planning picked this out, this will be presented to the Plan Commission. But we have a special streetlight fixtures, we have Ballard lightings that are going to go there. We have, the chief of police wanted some raised crosswalks in different places, so we're, we're accommodating all of those requests.
Well, and those, you know, the, the uses will want the signage on, I would, I mean, I think it'd be foolish without wanting them on both sides, certainly on 231, you know, as well, which there's plenty of space for.
Well, that's why, if you turn back to the picture, you'll, we just have them as tenants now, but...
Right. I mean, it's with, with, with the lights on them, I mean, it's...
I mean, you're not going to see any, you're, you're going to see proper lighting, you're going to see...
Yeah. And that's a problem Crown Point has, is that they're building, they're trying to build the same thing down Summit, and they have no parking.
They have no parking for it, though.
No. And you can go to Santa Fe, which you know well. And it's on Summit, and, I mean, you're, you're stuffed. And as long as it'll fit a truck, like, a big pickup or something like that, I mean, how can you go wrong? That really ticks me off.
And remember, these...
10 by, what are they, 10 by...
10 by 20.
10 by 20?
Yeah, but a lot of them are 9 by 18. Those are the ones that aggravate you.
RV there.
10 by 20, I can comfortably, Mike, you can get your pickup truck, I can get mine, and you can get a big SUV, which a lot of people in St. John do drive. That's why we want to make sure, we're going maximum, 10 by, we're going to go the max. We want comfortable parking. And remember, a lot of this, you're accommodating deliveries, too. If you're going to bring these restaurants in, which we want to bring in, and that's why I know the town wants that, that was discussed from day one, we have to accommodate deliveries back here, too. We don't want them coming down the main front edge.
Okay, so what's your motion, Mr. Jorgensen?
All right, well, I mean, Mr. President, that's up to you. If you put it out of discussion.
We've had discussion. Would like to make a motion to accommodate the architectural, the usage, which is restaurant and office on the second floor, to move forward with this project.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the uses of office and restaurants at this time. Elevation and design is presented here tonight with the proposed uses at the discretion of the Town Council in the future. Satisfied?
That's exactly what we agreed to.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is four to zero?
Everybody is. Everybody's approving it.
How does the gates get here?
Well...
Take your golf cart.
We're working within that. We have to get across 231. And we're working within that, because we knew that was going to come up.
Or you could, or you can move to Mill Creek.
Yeah, I mean, Matt, Matt Roersen, we're pulling. Well, we're going to have two roundabouts, Parish and Klein.
Thank you.
Congratulations on Kmart.
Probably.
I cannot wait to see that take place.
Thank you, Steve. Billy, thank you for the presentation. Jackie, thank you. With that, we'll move to C, Clerk Treasure.
Well, Wayne talked about the shred day, which is great. And then also, so everybody's aware, the townwide garage sale starts May 1st through May 4th, so we should see increased traffic throughout the neighborhoods. I think we have roughly 260 participating homes throughout the town. You can check the website or social media to find an entire list. And if you still want to participate, just email me and we can get you all set up. But that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Beth. Moving to item 11, adjournment.
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'd like to go on.
Huh? Okay.